Steve sent me a message that he would be joining in a bit. Uh but we do have Nick uh from the. Building on here, so I don't know if there's anything we wanna focus on if uh if Nick is with us here.
Well, I'm.
Paul, is there anything on your list that was uh?
Well, one of the things Nick and I had gone over and Mark, I sent you the comments a few weeks ago about incorporating. Chain, if we're able, if you were scoped to make changes. Uh based on the new uh Affordable Homes Act on accessory dwelling units. We I flagged about five or six items that I think need to be uh revised to comply.
Okay.
With with the new law. Um fortunately, we do allow ADUs by right um but only for de- uh attached units. Which getting clarification from the state. Um we do have to, that law extends to. Um detached units as well and then there are a few things that we need to change, like we we have a mandatory. We have a requirement that for owner occupancy for at least one of the two units, the state. Stayed away with that. Uh we have some changes in parking because ours is based on. It's one space per unit and or bedroom. And theirs is one space per unit, so. Small changes, but I think we flagged um what we need to change.
Okay. About this yesterday in Holden, where I'm also about a month behind you. Um is it your interpretation that? Towns must follow the Healy ADU model? In other words, it supersedes anything in the book today?
Sorry, Paul.
Go ahead, Nick.
So Mark, I I sat in a seminar with the uh with Simbola, the the building officials of Southeast of Mass.
Yep.
Last Wednesday, we had a um. We had an attorney who I guess represents um a handful of local towns. Basically tell us that as of the date of in February that's noted in that in that law, that new change. I don't know if it's the first or the fifth or the seventh or whatever, but as of. That date noted in February, it's 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 a by right and it supersedes um local town law bylaws.
All right, who is the attorney, if you remember?
I don't remember off the top of my head, I you know what I'll do is while we're talking, I'll see if I can look back. I know Amy Queso, our town council, did do a seminar about a month ago on it. Um for a bunch of of her communities as well.
Okay. Yeah.
Um but let me see if I can find. Who the speaker was to Simbola um last Wednesday.
Right, so you know typically our spring town meetings in May, so we might have a few months of.
Jay Ta- Taylorman?
Well, my former partner.
Perfect, so you're familiar with him?
Yeah, we're having a fight right now.
Uh oh. Um I've never met him and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to shake his hand and introduce myself during the meeting because there was a a bunch of people there, but. Yeah, he sounded like he did um. You know, he he's 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 probably much smarter than I am when it comes to the legality of stuff, but he did say that um. Come February, it'll be interesting because the way it was written is that it's it's by right as of that date noted.
Uh it supersedes.
Yeah. But he also noted a bunch of of kind of hypocritical gray areas. With um with all the regulations that came out too, because they were very. I don't know if you've read them yet or not, but from a building standpoint, they're very bland. Um and not very specific as far as. You know Norton is is eighty-five percent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, we're eighty-five percent septic system. It's adding a bedroom, whether it's in an accessory dwelling unit or not, there's a there's a bunch of other regulations and restrictions that. The law really didn't take any consideration. Or maybe they did and they didn't note it, but. Um there's a lot of of hands that are gonna be in that cookie jar if somebody comes forward and wants to pursue that project.
Uh Steve has joined, so I'll call planning board meeting to order here with three members. And we can dive right in.
Well, I gotta do some brushing up. I was hoping to escape without having to brush up and anything, but now you're telling me that I gotta brush up. As Holden did yesterday morning, so. Well, good thing I'm flying to New Orleans on Saturday.
Good for you, for fun, I hope.
Two weeks of fun.
You're not having fun in New Orleans?
It's a great place to go for Halloween. People take it very seriously.
I've I've seen, I haven't been there for Halloween, but I've heard the stories.
I think it's their second best holiday. We had two kids go to school there.
Yeah, Tulane, you've said, yeah, great school.
Yeah, uh sure, my daughter will.
Then Mark, whenever the time is right, can we talk about the community event about three weeks?
Yeah.
But whenever. You know, w- let's go through our. The document and then afterwards.
All right, well, thanks uh very much to Laura for putting together a brief list of stuff that she flagged. Uh we can, we can start there or. Um we can do that at the end, doesn't really matter. Uh what I tried to do in in the stuff I sent you a while back was um. Cover a lot of miscellaneous items that we had talked about. I think I sent a slew of files. Uh having to do with gradations of retail sales. Um that's one. Um. The W, the Water Resource Protection, the Wetlands Protection District is not mapped, right? That's a so. Case in Lakeville with Judge Spicer last year. And there is a provision in chapter forty A, section four, that says all zoning districts shall be mapped. Show on the zoning map, something like, they don't all have to be on the zoning map, it could be a separate map. But if there's no map, that's kind of short of the mark, so.
Well, I've I've had conversations with John Thomas, our conservation director about this and and I we're both. Thinking it would be, it's really an unnecessary overlay district because. Conservation regulates the wetlands. Whether you're in that district or not, they're treated equally, so and and in this town, we just follow the Wetlands Protection Act, we don't have a zoning. A wetland zoning bylaw. I think.
General bylaw.
Correct, correct, sorry, not a zoning, of course not, uh but we don't have a wetlands bylaw, but. It it just seems to me that this is.
All your problems, I don't know.
Get rid of it, and and it doesn't harm us, because again, the wetlands. The the Wetland Protection Act covers far greater areas of town than this overlay di- than that overlay district, so.
Yep.
I would, I mean, I know that may be beyond the scope here, but that I think would be a of. A proactive way of addressing it and. Not doing really any changes, not resulting in any changes and certainly not any adverse changes.
Do you think that you could get a fifty plus one vote at town meeting for a wetlands bylaw, a general bylaw?
No, I'm talking about, I'm so I've I'm sorry, I was referring to this wetland overlay district.
Yeah.
That's not mapped. No, I I think we've tried in the past and it wasn't. Well received, I I don't, you know, John's not on the call, but I don't think he's. Interested in moving forward with it.
Dying on that hill again?
Yeah, uh you know, oh so he's smarter than me, so um. And at this point, he's uh he had, well, anyway, he can speak for himself on it, but. I was just referring to the overlay district that it probably is. Should go away.
You wanna take it out?
If we're, if you're scoped to do it and if you.
Well, I mean, I I it's a simple matter, I'll just say delete the old Wetlands Protection District. Period, I mean, that's the end of that.
I would support it, I mean, I'm not a voting member, but I I I don't think it does any harm, I think it helps us out.
If MGL requires us to have a map and we don't have a map, why we, why, why not just get rid of it and let Concom? Will.
Yeah.
You know, throughout their their purview as needed.
Well, I guess where I'm going is I'd love to hear from the board members on that, but yeah, I agree with you, Nick.
So Mass General says in section four, I'm just calling it up here.
It came for myself, I think I would, if we had a written note from John saying. This does nothing for me, please delete it, I'm fine with his judgment.
Second paragraph for section four, which is very short, districts shall be shown on a zoning map in a manner sufficient for identification.
Yeah, so I would, I would either, either we have to get on the ball and create a map.
Yep.
Or eliminate it altogether, because conservation by right has jurisdiction within a hundred feet. Of wetlands, no matter what anyway, so.
Kind of hard to map it if they're changing all the time.
Well, and that's my point too, Mark, is right, is and John's been very adamant that. You know, if you're outside of three years from an an- from filing an Anrad, um you're remapping and he's reconfirming and. Um. It is what it is. I think I think creating a map. And like Mark just said, in three years is is you have to update it based off of of how John operates.
Right, I mean, that's a great point too, Nick, I mean, wetlands change and. It's just, again, it doesn't serve any purpose, it's it's. The wetlands are already covered under a much broader program.
A- as far as DEP goes, I mean, the whole purpose of a general bylaw is to fill the DEP loopholes. When you get more aggressive, so towns typically put no touch, no build in the local wetlands bylaw. You're allowed to build anywhere in the buffer if you can get an order of conditions under the state regs. And they also regulate things like vernal pools, which are not regulated under the state regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we we can, we typically, and again, I don't lay pause it, I don't wanna speak for John, but traditionally, there's a twenty-five foot no touch in town. Right, and then and then John always has. Um you know, he deals with the engineers and and they, he handles all that kind of project by project, but.
What does that mean traditionally, there's a twenty-five foot no touch?
I'm just, that's your standard practice for for Concom in town.
Is it written, is it written in a regulation somewhere?
I'm honestly not sure, Mark, I I've never read, fully read their regulations from the conservation department, but.
Maybe I'll create a little mischief here, there's a, there's a case from North Andover years ago. I think the case is called Field Crest Meadows or something like that, it's a. It's a case in which the North Andover Conservation Commission has a policy, quote unquote. Of a twenty-five foot no touch zone and some guy doesn't like it and he sues him. And so his policy is not a regulation and the court. Basically agrees with him completely, every land use layer has this case on a, you know, on a card. Because if it's just a policy, it's not applicable and you you it's easy to knock it out of the box.
Yeah, again, and and I don't, just like, I don't wanna speak for for John, but. Um I've never read through their regs, so it may be in writing, it may not, I don't, I don't have that answer here, but. Um.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but he he's made it clear there and and we know from his predecessor, there's a twenty-five foot no build.
But if you don't have a bylaw, how could it be in the regs?
Uh we we need to explore that.
Yeah. And the regs implement the bylaw. So uh usually the bylaw contains a provision that says the Concom may adopt those regulations to fill in the details here.
Right. But this overlay district is in the zoning bylaw, which falls under the planning board's purview.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't even be Concom.
But it's not up to speed, I mean, it doesn't, it it doesn't have what a modern general bylaw would have. To me, like it was be created before the Hatch Act.
From my perspective, it does seem like most of it is the wetlands in general anyways, which is regulated separately, but does this? Give the planning board. Uh like a select set of uses that we're supposed to review for like within the wetland buffer zone? Such as playgrounds, agriculture.
Yeah.
Is is that like that hundred foot buffer or whatever is kind of within this map space? Even if it's technically wetland or not right now?
Um let me pull that up, Steve, it's a great question.
It is a bit hard without a map to to reference. Exactly what we're.
It's, yeah, it's it's a, it's a legal description, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, it goes on and on and on.
But I'd have to like review that against the topographic map. And. It would be nice to see it, just to kind of visualize what it actually covers and why, but.
Yeah, but I bet that 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 those legal descriptions now are probably. Many of them are not overlapping with today's wetland conditions.
Right. Right.
If we get rid of that district, it's become a case by case basis to determine.
You still have the fallback of the state regs under three ten CMR ten, which are very detailed and complicated.
Yeah.
Um but like I said, the hierarchy here typically is state regs. Are like the basic minimum standard, and and not that they're minimal regulations, they're pretty thorough. But they don't cover certain things and the I already mentioned them, so if you wanna up the ante, you you know. Most um. Certainly, most eastern Massachusetts communities have adopted a general bylaw to close the loophole.
Yeah, we we, I think we tried a few years back and it failed.
Yeah.
But to to Steve's point, there are uses that. Are can be approved by the planning board within the district. Parks and playgrounds, agricultural, construction of a single family home.
Right.
And and that to me is kind of where it gets real restrictive, because. If you're on a parcel outside of a wetland area, but you're in this district. You might just be limited to single family homes, whereas the underlying zoning might allow opportunities for a duplex. But this really clamps down on it. More so, it's much more restrictive in that in that regard, unless conservation has. Some authority to regulate the type of use, but they don't typically get to do that.
But I would think that if the boundary section here of the Wetland Protection District. Is consistent with the state definition of a wetland in the CMR. It's just duplicative, I mean, I it doesn't look like it would be. But maybe it is, I haven't, you know. Most of it has to do here with elevations.
Right.
And the state regulation focuses on vegetation. Um.
Right.
So God knows whether or not these ancient elevations. Still contain wetlands or bigger wetlands for that matter.
Right.
And it would seem under the circumstances that, so how does the Concom administer this in conjunction with the state reg? Do they, you make two applications? One under the state reg, one under this?
Well, this would be administered, this overlay district's administered by the planning board. Um so.
Yeah, right.
When a project comes along that's within this district, they they have to apply for the special permit.
Yeah. Has there ever been a case where the planning board didn't or did grant the special permit and the Concom reached a different result under the CMRs?
I I'm not during my tenure.
Yeah.
Doesn't come up that often, but.
My knee jerk reaction is that you should just get rid of it and rely on three ten CMR ten.
Hmm. I sent John an email, he, I don't know if he's here now, but um I'll I'll forward you his response uh tonight or tomorrow.
But my. Move on to the topic.
I was gonna say, my my thought on it would just be either we can scrap it if it matches the wetlands and and the Massachusetts code. Otherwise, we only need to keep it if we wanna use it to go beyond what the code is doing. If we wanna regulate the buffer zone a little bit more strictly or or something else, but. We'd still need to look at what the mapping would be for that beyond just the writing. It's a little bit more complicated, but it it really depends on our attitude, do we wanna regulate beyond? Mass code or not?
Sure. And I'll I'll talk more with John about that point.
All right, well, I'm just gonna leave it in there for now and we need to pull it, we got plenty of time to do it.
So I did um include a lot split by district boundary. I did include um home occupations, a newer model that I typically use. Um I think what we're what we're headed for now is a third draft. That's both clean and quoted. Um and then that would be the document that we use in November. So I'm just flipping through here.
Yeah, I'm that now that we have Nick on the. I just confirm that Nick has looked at, I think it's five point O. Where I was always a little. Evident to weigh in, but it's not really.
Yeah.
My purview?
I have, and you're talking about nonconforming uses instructors?
No, that's.
I think so, yeah.
What was the concern?
I didn't have any, uh other than I know enough to know I don't know enough. To know whether this works.
Oh, it works. It works.
I I was looking for the next way in before I signed off on it.
Yeah, I don't um. I don't have an issue with Laura, I think it's, I think it covers our our, what we need to cover. But it gives, it gives leeway where I think it needs to give leeway to, right, so. I don't think there's any concern with five O.
Right.
Okay, so you don't, there's no need for me to go through it then, is what I'm hearing?
No, Mark, this is, there's no need for that, I I'm zipping through it now, a lot of it looks like we have. The basic gist. In our bylaw already, but it it's just cleaned up, so I don't have an issue with.
I I it honestly isn't about, I would have to say. I'm sure fifty, probably more like sixty-five or seventy towns and the I've never gotten a phone call from any town except Oak Bluffs. That they, you know, they were troubled by it or that they couldn't figure it out or that it didn't work, so. And and that wasn't my fault.
This next one's better, I like it.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it just gives more leeway, Paul, did you go through this?
Yeah, I went through everything.
Yeah, I'm, I don't have an issue, I think this is fine.
That was the idea, give a little bit more leeway to people.
Yeah, get the ZBA home earlier.
Yeah.
Um what about our friends, the performance standards?
Which ones, eh can I ask, as I am having problems with Zoom here, I I can only have control over one monitor. And I can't pull up anything else without. So hopeful that maybe people could share screens, so I can, if we're. Talking about a specific item, I might be able to see it, cuz. Uh I have three mo- three screens and only one can. You know, can I uh make my way around?
Do you want me to put these sections up on my screen and share?
That would be great. Thank you.
I gotta call the bylaw up first, hang on. Okay, I've been working on a third draft, so you're gonna see some. Third draft uh stuff here, hang on. All right, so do I have clearance to share?
You should.
Okay. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so. I'm just gonna go through the list that I used to create the uh. The third draft. Yeah, so what I think I'm gonna end up doing here is adding the home occupations, which I believe I sent in a separate file. Um this will go in here, that's a system by which if you have. No customer client or non-resident employee, you can have a home occupation as a right. Whereas if you have any of those things, you need a special permit. And I I I think we said in June that that was the. Direction we wanted to go.
Yeah, I agree, that's that's fine.
Okay, let let me just keep my notes accurate here. Maybe what, so we.
Sorry, one comment.
Go ahead.
Uh on the home occupation by special permit, it says. Uh no more than two additional non-resident resident employees, I think we already allow three. Non-resident, so.
I'll just match uh. The number of employees with the current bylaw.
Cool, that's it, thank you.
All right, what did I take out of six point one point two? Oh, in six point one point two. Well, it was a provision having to do with. Nonconforming parking. I think we moved it over to the uh section five. But that's done. All right, so I broke out a definition for accessories and accessory structure. I think I s- I sent a corner clearance sample, did anybody have a chance to look at that? I gotta find the email, cuz it's got a bunch of files attached to it.
I think we saw that one.
That was, that was a couple meetings ago, right?
That was a while ago.
I'm not in the last.
No, it was, it was over the summer.
Oh. Oh yeah, sounds fun.
Okay. So here's the corner clearance. Let me stop sharing.
I I remember on the last time, we talked about the the site distance being too long. To enforce the thirty-five foot distance from the intersection.
Yeah. So that's the, the uh, I think you want a separate file. You wanna change that in any way?
Uh well, again, I I think we we decided to not. Uh somehow we reduced the thirty-five foot distance down. I I'm not sure what we all agreed on or anything, but. And I remember we talked about that being kind of like, in in the Grove, some of the lots are only fifty or a hundred feet wide. And to make the curb thirty-five feet seem not feasible at all, so I. I'm not sure what we all agreed on, if it was like five feet or something like that.
We don't have any more notes.
I'm not sure what the distance for like a ADA compliant. Uh like sidewalk corner is, but maybe that's like the minimum to provide that sidewalk corner potential.
I it's more, I think it's more like um. Uh Ash Towns, uh you know, site distance. Wanna go with twenty feet instead of thirty-five? Much about the length of a car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess so.
Okay.
Cuz we were talking about the rock walls, plantings, holes, lights.
Yeah, it it's to prevent. Um cars having to peer around. You know, bushes, uh any any obstruction and at or near an intersection.
Right, but like I think I think we mentioned how like here in the Grove, especially, I think a lot of other little parts parts of town. It that would push. A lot of the fences too far into somebody's yard around the corner. Like i- it would cut off chunks of people's, I think if we reviewed the last meeting, I think we went over that.
Okay.
And unfortunately, six point three.
I I downloaded it on June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, six point three is lighting. So I I'm having trouble finding. Where this would go, I'm sure it's in my notes and.
Oh, this is just the numbering system that was used from the town I took it from.
So.
It it would, it would probably go to uh. Either the dimensional requirements or a separate section in the parking requirements, six point one.
And Tim somehow dropped off and he's trying to get back in and I'm waiting for the host to. Um to let him back in.
Well, wait, is your town meeting still set for the end of the month? Of May?
Um, uh we don't know yet, um typically it's middle.
Okay.
Middle to end. Oh, good, here's Tim.
Yeah, I think I got a date from you last time of May. Yeah, rumor had it that it was gonna be on the twenty-eighth. So just keep me in the.
Maybe that's what we had it as last year.
Suspiciously like Memorial Day.
Okay, I found it. Uh it looks like what we discussed there was. Less than thirty-five feet. Or ten percent of the lot line length, whichever is shorter.
So for a fifty-foot lot, it would be five feet?
Yep.
I I mean, that seems more reasonable for sure.
Okay, I got it.
I also have a note in here that says this is more a matter of enforcement and a building design standard. Could be selectively enforced. I also have a note in here that says not worth the pitchforks at town meeting.
Not worth that?
Yeah, I really, that's what I thought. It intrudes too much on people's property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're gonna tell me to cut down my tree?
Yeah. Those are my notes.
Yeah, I'd be okay not having it. Not my hill to die on.
What's the general consensus? You know, every morning I pull out of my side street onto a larger street, I would hardly call it a. Major collector street, but it's busy enough. And my neighbor has hydrangeas and other bushes that are, you know, right in the corner. And it's gotten to the point where the stop sign, which is only about a hundred and fifty feet from the intersection. I can't tell if anybody's coming through there. And it there've been some things where you, it's kinda iffy. You you always wanna have the power to be able to knock on the door and say, you have to cut that bush.
Yeah, I I I would certainly be more in supportive of of. Public safety, cuz I too, I I in my neighborhood, we have a fence. On a, well, it it fronts a a an arterial road, but if you're on the side street pulling out. I've had a situation where a pedestrian was coming, walking and. You you don't see them until you're right on top of them. And I would. Prefer to have better visibility for safety reasons.
Mark, who enforces that?
The building inspector knocks on the door.
And tells somebody to trim their hydrangea?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if it's a safety hazard and the bylaw has a rule.
My my only concern, and I guess the question to think about too is if. Does your line of sight or obstruction, that's for corner lots, but what about just regular frontage lots? Right, so with fences, not so much with with trees and bushes, but with fences, we have a couple instances in town where. We've had neighbors fight, especially on a state road. And we've brought them, I say we've brought them, they've gone to ZBA. Um you know, with concerns and this, that and the other thing with a fence, right now our bylaw has is a has a. A rule or regulation, we'll call it, that's, you know, similar to what you have with the corner lot, but it's a ten by ten. You measure from the driveway intersection with the street. Ten feet along the sidewalk, ten feet up the driveway, and you make that triangle, and that's your. That's your area that you can't have an obstruction in, but outside of that triangle, there's nothing in our local that says. You can't put a four-foot tall fence right up to the sidewalk.
He was still a very, very strong guy, we sat him um in the back of the car, that was the one of the longest journeys. Biggest journeys I've ever been on, to be honest.
Sounds like it's BBC America.
Yeah.
Um so so elaborate on that, Mark, right, like. That goes to a fence viewer, we have a fence viewer in town, but then our particular fence viewer goes out, takes a look and then won't put anything in writing. Or give them any type of literature to to hang their hat on, either go to NASTOT, to go to me, to go to the board. So. I have, I I would actually wouldn't mind seeing some type of regulation that that if you have a suggestion that would prohibit. You know, fences from being within ten feet of of the road layout for line of sight or for for visual obstruction. Not just on a corner lot, but on other lots, if you if you know anything, or can you suggest anything that may relieve? Or give us some type of jurisdiction or something to hang our hat on. If and when that problem arises in the future, cuz it's gonna happen again, I'm sure of it.
And look, so you're suggesting that uh any fence on any lot ends ten feet before the street line?
Yeah, whether it's that or we have a regulation that that within ten feet of the street layout, you can only be a certain height.
Yeah.
Um for for the exact reason you just said with the bushes and the shrubbery, a fence poses the same issue, right?
I I'm personally like, I I wouldn't wanna prohibit. Somebody from building a a a wall or a fence on their lot. I mean, es- especially if you've got limited size to your property. To take a couple thousand square feet off your lot and put it outside of your fences is a little bit harsh.
So I think it's more on the roadway, Steve, you gotta look at it this way, if you're in a butter. Right, say you're on, let's use Minersville Ave for instance, say you live on Minersville Ave and your neighbor puts a seven-foot tall fence. Up to the edge of the sidewalk and your driveway fifteen feet from that fence. And your property is on a curve on Minersville Ave. Is the concern is it pulling out of your driveway, if you have to cross over that lane of traffic. And you can't see down the road and don't know what's coming. That's a concern, that's a safety concern, now granted, you. As the as the as the resident that puts the fence on your property have no issue because it's your property. Right, but we can make that in any situation, you wanna do what you wanna do on your property, but. Sometimes people don't get along with their neighbors, for lack of a better term. Right, and and unfortunately, sometimes people also do things out of spite.
Sure, that's that's true.
Right, so I think, I think, and I'm not disagreeing with you, on a five thousand square foot lot. Down, you know, say on Sunset Ave or Acre Road or Ridge Road. Yeah, I agree with you, every square foot counts. But but from a public safety standpoint, we also have to consider certain instances where. Such as that one on Minersville Ave where it is a legitimate safety concern.
Sure. And and well, I think something specific would. Would be to make it um like ten feet. From the road or ten feet from the the actual public easement that we have for the town that could build the road in.
I think it should be ten feet from the granite curving on the sidewalk. Or from the asphalt on the road. Whatever whatever Mark on, you know, Mark's done this, whatever he suggests, but.
It's usually the street line, the layout line.
Yeah, or you or you can do. I don't know, Mark, what do you think about the center line of the road? That's a that's a that's a a a not movable object or not a questionable object, right, that's kind of a static. Location.
Well, sometimes the center line isn't in the center of the layout, that's the problem. It can be shifted over to one side or the other.
I think, yeah, I think that's kind of what I why I would look at it, because if the road, if your layout is forty feet. And the road ends up, you know, three feet from the right side layout line, but. Then the middle of the road. Well, I guess, I guess you could look at it both ways, right, from your point of view and from my standpoint, but.
Can we look, can we think about this for a sec? The center of our town, the historic old library has a big block wall, maybe four feet off the road. And our whole entire town common has a fence right against the road.
That there there is no obstruction to line of sight whatsoever on either of those issues.
Think of a seven-foot stockade fence instead, Steve.
So maybe part of it is, is if it's how what the level of transparency is, so like a. You know, a chain link fence, it doesn't create an obstruction but a privacy.
I think the easier way to do it, and Mark, you can you can tell me to shut up if you think I'm wrong, but. Either it's a, either you do a setback from from the road layout, right from the road. Or you do a height restriction within.
I think you do that, yeah, I think.
Or you can do both.
Yeah, you'd kind of drop it, let it cake it down as it approaches the road.
Yeah. Because it it's, again, Stephen, and I totally understand where you're coming from, and can respect, you know. The consideration of my own property and wanna be able to use every square inch of what I pay taxes on. But again, in certain instances. We gotta take it into consideration, and that doesn't, that, you know. So maybe you can put a four-foot fence, and four feet is the height number. Is, you know, you can put a four-foot fence across the front yard of your property, and you can you can use your whole property.
Yeah.
Right, in your side yard. You know, like Mark just said, wedding cake it down or or slant it down from ten feet off the roadway down to where the fence goes. I think we just have to seriously take into consideration the visibility and the line of sight. That like Laura said, a six or seven-foot stockade privacy fence. Can can impede on if we allow it to be right on the front property line.
Yeah, I know the one that.
We need to have something for this type of. About the corner lot and is because of import. Just general fencing to the road life. And this feels like something to be put in the draft and make sure that we prioritize community.
Tim, you you faded out there, any chance you could repeat that?
I think this is something that we wanna have in the draft, that we want to include in the. Many engagement sections.
Yeah, I.
Still not getting it.
I I'm okay with putting some version of this in. I would, I would like to make sure we don't over overdo any part of it.
Let me look for some examples and I'll shut, I'll send them around and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Remember, this is the last time we talked about this, before the November that. I'm basing this in the.
Okay. Um I sent you three sample parking tables. I think it was Andover, Concord and Eastern. I don't know if anybody had any thoughts, but. I'm listening. I think I I think one of the reasons we did that is because your parking table, let me get the parking table up here, hang on. You have an unusual parking table.
All right, did you have specific thoughts?
I did, I'm trying to find them. Unfortunately, I love this stuff so well. I'm not remembering where anything is anymore.
This is the non-residential section of the uh. Table six point two, six point one is residential. And. You don't, you know, you kinda. Most towns, if you look at what I said, you're from Andover, Eastern or Concord, it's. You know, it's not public assembly, it's specific things.
Right, yeah, that's a, that's a big issue throughout our parking. Is, you know, we're 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 seeing it now with, we have an educational facility that'll be coming to the board. And our si- our standard is one parking space per three students, but there are so many different educational facilities. You can't just have one.
So. I mean, what what you'd have to do is take. I mean, what what you'd have to do is take, these are all good parking tables, as far as I'm concerned, the ones I sent you, they. They tend to work. Um, Eastern's the closest town. And not a bad comp.
I made a note that I liked Eastern's catchall number twenty-two.
Any use not interpreted, yeah. Oh, okay. All right, well.
If there's any debate about where you follow me, we get to, we get to choose, yeah.
So we don't have people dictating and. Trying to fight case law and. I I tried to do a comparison against what we had versus what they had and. It was that very different description of things. Uh, Concord seems to appear there are no multifamily housing there. Not allowed, not allowed in Concord, is it?
I think it's probably all forty B if there is.
Yeah, but there's there's literally no parking standards for multifamily in Concord. That I can find.
No, the um, yeah. And there uh there's no freestanding entry for multifamily in the use table. You know, I I'm researching a project for. For an assisted living facility and. I wanna do independent living with it, and it would be nice in a multifamily building and. I don't have that opportunity, I've gotta call it assisted living, even though they're not getting any assistance.
I think Eastern seems to be. Yeah, the the most helpful and least onerous, I found Andover. It was a lot. And maybe it covers absolutely everything we would ever need, but it seems oversold to me. That I could be convinced otherwise.
Do we wanna tackle this with um? Do you wanna tackle it with us? Want me to take a try at it?
Well, can I just throw out a a a different approach here, um, and this is something that's been in my mind for a few years. Um, couldn't we just reference the latest version of? IT's parking generation? I mean, that's a very detailed, and it's the most professionally accepted standard for parking. And it does get updated periodically, whereas the problem with like with any of these, they're static and. IT is continuously studying. You know, they're looking at parking and traffic studies throughout the country on these similar types of uses. And I would put more credibility in in that than. You know, um. Then, well, I mean, we could take, we could take standards based on the most current, but. Once, once these numbers get updated, which IT does periodically. We might have to go back and amend this, and do we really want to do that?
Yeah, it wouldn't change. In the uh iterations of the IT manual, unless you went back and amended the bylaw too.
Well, I would just say the most, you you would deal with that by saying the latest version of it.
Yeah, but if the changes, it's it's you're administratively changing the zoning without town meeting approval. So I I think it would need. Periodic. Um, I'm, you know, just periodic, unconfirmatory. Bylaw votes, that's all.
Well, could this be in a planning board regulation?
Yeah, that's an easy, that's kind of a a a nice way around it, yeah.
And it would allow for things to be updated without having to go. You know, through that onerous task of.
Well, I think it fits particularly under um number twenty-two of Eastern. If it's not in the book. Maybe the references, not the planning and zoning board, which is what they call it in Eastern. But maybe it's the IT parking meeting.
Is the parking, I know something that has public.
That is what?
Those you have to pay five hundred bucks.
Oh.
Is it one that's public access or do you pay five hundred bucks for it or whatever?
Then we're not getting you.
Yeah, I think some of this is academic because I did add. Six one fourteen is new. So, um, you can vary the requirements of the parking table if it can be demonstrated. That a modification won't result in substantial detriment.
Yeah, I think giving them that flexibility, I think is a positive.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like Tim's question was, is IT parking reference something that everybody is? Able to access or do you have to buy a subscription to it?
Oh, you have to get a subscription to it, but you know, traffic engineers have it.
This, um. Regulations for parking in residence classifications is. It it you should really eliminate the stuff in yellow. It's it's not real anymore. Government subsidized housing wo- doesn't exist anymore. There's only a couple of programs, HUD two oh two. And pretty much the age limitation just to get in is sixty-two in a in a HUD two oh two. So not many people are driving.
My comments are better now?
You did there.
Okay. My feeling is we need to, I would prefer to have something like Eastern, if we wanna reference IT as a catchall at the end, that's fine, but. I don't know if I like people not being able to know. Being able to look it up without having the papers.
I I'd like to stay traditional and keep it right on paper.
I'm fine with Eastern, I think it was the. More applicable of the three.
So I'm gonna make a single table out of these two. I'm gonna use what Eastern has for residential. And I gotta find it again. Yeah, so single, two family, multifamily, I'll just follow the use table. If it's missing, um, from the parking table, but it's in the use table, I'll make a list and we'll assign some numbers to it. So everything in the use table, I have a parking uh assignment. I mean, I might even add a column to the use table to say, you know, parking by code A, B, C, something like that.
What's that?
Um, I'm writing. Um, okay, let me put this aside. Um, awaiting substitute for seven, three, eight, two, what is that? There was an amendment to seven, three, eight, two, having to do with setback requirements for wireless.
That's me, I owed you that, I still do, I'll send it.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't like when a shed had to fall two hundred feet towards about.
Okay. And did I get the marijuana overlay? While we're, while I'm waiting for stuff to come, did I get that?
The bylaw, I thought I sent it to you.
I mean, who sent it to me, Paul?
I should have.
I have an email that does it with them.
I can easily send that.
Well, hang on, let me see if I got it.
Yeah, on September twenty-fourth, Brian indicated that Mark made the changes to the draft as follows. And added the changes to the marijuana overlay in nine point four.
Yeah, I see it, okay.
The other item that was in my, did we finish this pile, maybe this is on your list, Mark? Is the due diligence around citing for adult use.
Um, fighting, what was it again?
Uh, the citing for adult use.
Oh, yeah.
Thousand foot. And, you know, Steve did a lot of, he he did GIS work on that and did a comparison of what the five hundred foot. And it does bring in a few more properties. So pretty limited with a thousand feet, right, Steve, you did the work, so please. More intelligently to it than me.
I mean, just reducing the buffer space from a thousand foot to five hundred feet. Basically allows our industrial park to be fully accessible to adult use, it doesn't go beyond that. Um, there's a tiny spot in the middle of the Valentine property swamp out back. That would technically be accessible, but I not the entire property or most of it, it's probably wetlands anyway. Um, but that's only one other space in town as far as industrial land.
But we would then, um. Citing requirements, we would reduce. This thousand to five hundred?
That's correct, if everybody agrees.
I think what we're looking to do is to make sure that a thousand feet. Didn't leave us with nothing.
Yeah.
And as long as something could go in, we were fine.
It has to be a reasonable something.
Yeah.
What'd you find out, Steve?
I remember a percentage being thrown around, like eleven percent.
Yeah, that's, um, Tingsborough's number was just. Under one percent, it was like point nine, point oh nine. Um, and Medford's was just over one percent, but Medford's a city, so they were held to a different, slightly different standard, it was like one point two or three. So Med, Tingsborough's was. Um. I I think Tingsborough had about ten thousand acres, so it was just under. Uh, one percent of that. And and I believe it was six lots, maybe. All owned by one guy, so it's pretty low standard. You don't have any adult entertainment now, do you?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, the the chances of you filing this up unless you're under pressure, pretty small.
I remember from Steve's analysis, it looked like several properties.
Yeah.
Would, but Steve, you correct me if I'm wrong on that.
The uh, the way I sort of, sorry, I'm trying to bring up my own map here, reference it, but um. I did, I did send the map out, but it it gives us essentially the the industrial part of South Worcester Street. And Commerce Way, Commerce Way itself would be within the the zone. But at the current one thousand feet, it's basically only Horizon Beverage. And even the road into the industrial park itself is not within the district.
Sounds like we made the right tweak to get it beyond single lot.
It's not a terribly dramatic change, it doesn't really put it anywhere else.
So what what I'm hearing then is keep it uh the way it is.
Response was to fit at the five hundred is. Instead of the thousand as it's, because a thousand as it is, which one, one only lot seems. Do not make the step potentially.
I'm comfortable with reducing it to five hundred feet.
Okay. Let me make a note.
Got a position that is a first amendment issue, uh, at recent time. That'll be fine.
Yeah, I I can't wait to explain this to town meeting.
We had somebody in town meeting that positioned themselves as an avid member of. It's order of the first amendment.
Well, they didn't know what they were getting into.
That's the best part.
Um, the, I sent you a model flexible development bylaw, I believe I sent you Sharon. Anybody have a reaction to that, let me call it up, hang on.
So I had a question on this. Is this in lieu, uh, I know you don't like our. Cluster development, is this in lieu of the cluster?
Yeah.
Alright, I I think we've determined. We make very good use of our cluster development.
Okay.
And there's no issue with them.
Okay. I'm fine with that. How do you, tell me about how you make good use of it?
We have several.
Okay, anything ongoing now?
Uh, in being built currently.
There is, they're being built. I'll be honest, for for what it's worth. Putting my developer hat on, our cluster bylaw does not, is not conducive to to developers.
Okay.
Um, our cluster bylaw is is way too restrictive on, um. On lot size.
Yeah.
Our cluster bylaw still requires a minimum one acre lot, that's not a cluster development.
It's not even Bill Ricker.
No.
I agree very, very much with that.
Our cluster bylaw from, and and take this with a granted for what it is. But from a developer standpoint, our cluster bylaws is very, 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 very not developer friendly.
Okay, have you looked at the flexible development bylaw that Mark sent?
I have not, I can go through that and give you my, and and give you an opinion of it, but. The cluster bylaw, in my opinion, and Mark, you can, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the point of a cluster bylaw is to. Is to allow for higher density building, right, so. Our cluster bylaw limits your smallest lot size to what ours, we already have a zoning district. That requires forty thousand square feet, so you really don't get any relief. The point of a cluster bylaw would be like a fifteen thousand or twenty thousand square foot lot in an art. In our forty zone, or half of the lot size of what zoning district it's in.
That's it is, it is half of, half of the lot size.
Minimum thousand square feet, Steve.
Is is it not, if you're sewer, you can go below the minimum lot size, it's only forty thousand if you don't have sewer.
I think our cluster bylaw restricts at a, it it taps out at forty thousand square feet.
I'd like to check, I don't mind the idea of reducing it if it is, but I I feel like it is available if it is a sewer property, I think that forty thousand's. Because most of the town's not.
Tell me where we have sewer available for, with a bigger parcel for, um, for cluster development in town.
Well, we don't, I I agree with that is a restrictive thing, but I think that is what's, the limitation factor is our bylaw that says we need to eat sewer. Well, if you need, if you don't have sewer, you have to have a forty thousand square foot lot, it's not. The cluster bylaw doing it, it's the forty thousand square foot restriction, restriction, I don't know if that's placed in there, but it's that wording.
I don't believe.
I've got it here, uh, in a cluster development made up of individual lots, each lot may be reduced in size up to fifty percent from the minimum size allowed. In the zoning district in which the site is located. In the zoning district in which the site is located. Or onsite sewage disposals required, a minimum of forty thousand is required.
Okay.
So you, you know, we're talking. It it could get down to twenty thousand in an R forty, but then. Our sixty drops at the thirty. It's still big, it's still. You know, one unit per acre is by definition sprawl. It is probably the worst. It's within that range of what people in my field would say is a very sprawling. Land use pattern, very inefficient. And so to suppo-, you know, to, you know, agree with Nick. If we were able to drop those, and again, that's contingent on having. Sewer, um, septic systems, obviously you're gonna be, you're gonna have to have meet. Title five and the size requirements there, which of course is a big problem in this town since. Very little of our area is sewored. But I think we should be incentivizing if there's, if sewer becomes available, that we should drop that. Uh, minimum lot size significantly. Cause that's a real cluster. I mean, the idea of a cluster is, is you, you make more compact development and set aside a lot of open space. You know, that's the trade off. And we do that here.
Would the trade off be able to be as, as long as a forty thousand square foot? Lot was provided for the septic that the individual house lots could be under forty thousand square feet?
You have an onsite septic system, right, so.
Well, uh, Steve, are you referring to a system like what we saw at Wading River Estates where there's a. A septic system, not individual systems?
Like a community system, yeah.
Huh, that's a good question.
Well, a flexible development can be a condo, so. There's no reason why you couldn't have some sort of a. Common septic system, or if you went over ten thousand gallons, you could do, go into package treatment, depending upon how big. Don't disagree with sewers an issue.
I think that that kind of comes into our cluster already, where if. The sewer is provided, whether it's on site or off site, if the houses are connected to a sewer. Then they individually, their lot sizes can be reduced. By half, and the restriction there would be being in the R forty district. And the R forty not just itself being reduced to an R twenty district or something.
Yeah, I just, you know, would say that I I think it might, it would make some sense to allow a. Even a reduction from there.
Sure.
That it would count as sewer, is that what you're saying? If it's one of those like group systems, it counts as sewer?
Right, because the homes are not on septic, they are sewer. But they're not on a septic system drainage leaching vehicle, they are sewored with a line, even if it's a privately owned station. I think we have a few examples of that in town. I think we have at least like four or five developments that have their own sewer.
Yeah, we do. We sure do. And no one can connect to them. I mean, other than the project itself.
Right.
So this, the flexible development is exactly what it says it is, it's um. Whether it's sewored or not, you just have to figure out the wastewater. Um, the idea is that you take. The houses and the the options are, you know, I I. If you, if you Google Concord River Walk, I think I've said this before. Then you'll see one end of the spectrum, which is a thirteen unit. Development on a three acre parcel, a lot of it is on the Asabet River, so there's a two hundred foot river zone. And the houses are very close together with a common area in the center. And the houses on the street. Are the old single families that have been converted to duplexes. So I think there's four on the street and the duplexes, and there's nine in the back. And it's prize winning, I mean, you you would think you were on Bainbridge Island, it's it's that kind of development. And then. On the other end of the spectrum, it, a developer. Has every incentive to do this, because if he can, he or she can cut the road length, you cut the cost dramatically. I'm not saying that they can build a navy base on a small parcel of land, but. The idea is that they. Can configure the houses in a way that relates to each other. You probably. Wanna have a landscape architect involved on your end when you're going through the regulatory process, just to make sure. That they don't try to give you a pig and a poke. Um, but the the, I think by definition, it's sort of always better than what you would get under, under a conventional plan. Um, if you monitor and and implement the process consistently. So the the towns that use this very effectively are places like Groton where there's really no sewer. Um, it's, it's mostly as rural as you are. And it has a a a much, much more lenient approach, um, so. The the way this works is you, you establish the number of units by a yield plan using conventional zoning. And other uh, health regulations. And that establishes the basic maximum number of lots under full conformance with all the regulations, and then. Um, if you wanted to do this for bonus units, you could achieve some bonuses by. Adding additional open space over the open space otherwise required. And a five percent increase in the basic maximum number would be awarded. And the other one is that you're offering significant amenities. And again, um, up to ten percent, um. A bonus, but that's all, it's all part of a special permit, so if you don't think you're getting anything in trade, you don't have to give a bonus. If this one just happens to have an affordable housing component up over and above the bonuses, so ten percent. Is uh, the affordable housing number, and it's added to, not subtracted from. The uh, the market rate units, so if you had ten market rate units, you gotta have ten percent affordable, you have eleven. Uh, the eleventh one is the affordable, you're not losing all of the market value, you're, you're, you're. People think of affordable units as not quite covering costs, and that's probably pretty accurate. And then under the types of buildings, one, two, and three, this is just their choice. Um, what it really describes here is Foxborough's uh, Cannon Forge. If you've never seen it, it's worth a drive. So it's off of uh, on its street. Um. And it's beautiful, it's hundred, it's about three hundred units, I think, and it's. Up and down the hill, there's common areas, tennis courts, swimming pools. The houses are laid out nicely, so you don't see very many garage doors from the roads. And I I think it's a job well done. Then you get into the details of the roads and parking, this is only calling for twenty percent open space. So the developer's not gonna go wild and 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 walk away. For twenty percent open space to get all these benefits, that's not so bad. And the open space has to be basically usable open space. Um, and then at the end of the day, you gotta get rid of the open space. There's some buffers to make sure that the neighbors. You know, uh, can tolerate a different style of development. The rate, all the rest of this stuff is pretty straightforward. And there's just some spectacular projects that have been done using the flexibility.
If if I could go in with that a little bit, it doesn't look terrible, I mean, I I don't mind reflecting on it, I do like our current cluster, and I'd rather try to. Tweak that if we can, but I I, I'm willing to consider some of this. Um, but our current cluster already asked for twenty percent.
Yep.
If we're gonna have like another version of a type of cluster development that's more versatile, more like. Variety, single family, two family, three family and. It, it seems like we should already just probably go beyond the twenty, like it, if twenty is the minimum, why why not bump it up and. At the planning board meeting, we just had the the density bonuses. Or they did not, well. So I would just get rid of that whole density bonus section.
Yeah, I feel like entering this into a re-qualification is. Uh, it's akin to touching the third rail at this point. This town, this town does not want us to make it easier. For more residents.
Do anything other than single family.
Uh, they don't even want single family, let's just be honest.
I I like the idea of architecture, but yeah, they don't want more residents.
But I have absolutely no problem if Nick wants to make some amendment to our current cluster development.
Agreed.
Well, I think the amendment probably would be to lower the minimum lot area. And or eliminate the requirement of a lot at all. Because that opens up the flexibility that you don't have today, I think.
Hmm.
I mean, a condo is, you know, perfectly appropriate under zoning. You um. In exclusive use areas, more or less, you know, it's not like owning a lot, so there's a little bit less in terms of value, but. It does do the job of giving kids a place to play.
Well, we actu-, we actually have a section of our bylaw that does that. Does all of this, and that's in our affordable housing bylaw. Right, that's what, that's how, that's how Wading River Estates got approved, right? I mean, the challenge there is because we have the affordable housing trigger. But it's, that's a, that's really the cluster, other than we don't set aside open space, but. That gets to more.
No set, well, we can forgive all the setbacks, they don't have the lot size, it's.
Yeah.
It goes right down to the minimum, I think. Well, there's no minimum for it, does it go below the five thousand?
Oh, I think you still have to meet your. Um, I I. I think you still have to meet your base zoning, but. But there's differences with it for sure, it's more, you can get more out of it than than your base.
Sure. Yeah, I think we already pretty much have it all covered, so maybe just tweaks to what we have.
Alright, I can make a couple of tweaks and see how they flow.
Yeah, I'm happy to listen to suggestions from Nick to make it work better as well.
Yeah, Laura, me and Paul can sit down and kind of throw some stuff together and get it out to you guys for sure.
Alright, well, that's what I had, so that's plenty, um. My goal is to give you a clean third. With a complete table of contents, along with a coded third. Pretty quickly. For the meeting that we've got scheduled for.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
So I need to talk about that, cause um. The most, as far as I've gotten with this is laying out some of the the procedural things. I have not noticed anybody, and my apologies, but. Um, but Mark, we we just had our town meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
There was a lot happening, but we have. So one question I have right off the bat is, you know, we, I I think it would be, we have to invite select board finance committee. As the, in in addition to ZBA and planning board. Is this a joint meeting? Or is this more of just a community? How do you usually do that?
Um, in Wakefield, we did it about a month and a half, two months ago, and if there was a quorum of another board. They had posted it and they opened it, and as the meeting ended, they also voted to adjourn.
Okay, so we will need to post, we will have to post agendas just to be safe.
Or make sure that a quorum doesn't come.
Okay, because I I, when I talked with the town manager's office, they said that we would need to notify. The chair and get it on an agenda to. I guess make a, make a call on it, so I'll follow up with them tomorrow. Um. But I think for the other boards, I mean, we can handle that just by posting an agenda, but I I'll talk to them about it for select board, but. You know, in in Norton, finance committee also makes recommendations to any zoning bylaw articles going to uh, town meeting.
Yep.
So they need, they need to be involved with it, because we've had just, just, just recently, I don't wanna, we don't need to talk about it, but they. Both of those boards recommended against an article, our three A article that the planning board had recommended for.
Hmm.
And um, I I think getting them at the table at this event is critical. Cause we need to get everybody on the same page.
I would also invite, send a message to economic development.
Okay. Good point.
Anybody else there?
No.
Uh, maybe, maybe Board of Health? I guess, Mark, is this also, uh, this is a public event, uh, do your communities typically. Invite the general public to wait, to come and participate?
I don't, at some point, yes. Now, whether that's at the so-called stakeholders meeting. It's up to you. I don't think you're gonna get a big turnout, but you know damn well that as we approach town meeting, the two things that are gonna be most often repeated are. I didn't know you were doing this, and how do you expect me to absorb this huge document? When I just picked it up off the pile on the table approaching town meeting. So the more you can.
On Monday.
The more you can deflect that, the better off you're gonna be.
So you're okay if we if we put out word uh, to the public as well?
Yeah.
Good.
The way, the way it typically runs is that the, this thing is gonna be posted online. Uh, relatively soon, so that people can look at it. Um, when I go, when we are at the meeting and we're gonna put something up on a a Zoom. Screen, I'm gonna use a clean version, not a coded version, cause I don't wanna get bogged down, and why is that yellow and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
And then I walk through it, section by section by section, so it's almost like a budget. Um, issue on town meeting. Section one, here's what we did. I usually have like a two-page, one piece of paper, two sides, cheat sheet. Major minor changes, and it's not everything, but it's enough to get people focused. So I'll walk through section one, it's all minor changes, I'll ask. Anybody if they've got any comments or questions, seeing none, we move on to section two. And you know, the use table is gonna be a big deal, the non-conformity section can be a big deal. If we were to introduce something new, certainly if the performance standards and six point five are still in there. Um, and they look like they will be, that's gonna be, you know, a a lengthy discussion, to the extent people have read it. I mean, if they haven't read it, it's not gonna be anything. And we try to get out of there and. You know, if it's a seven o'clock, six thirty start time, you wanna be out of there by eight thirty, nine o'clock. I think I walked out of the Wakefield meeting, just as Biden uttered his first words in the debate, it was on the night of the debate. And I got in the car, heard him make an ass out of himself, snapped the radio off, and. That was my evening.
Yeah, okay, but we've scheduled it for, we had agreed to six forty-five.
Yeah.
So I'm working to get the big room here at our new town hall. But I'll I'll talk to the town manager's staff tomorrow to make sure we get select board, but. It's like, you know, we'll make sure we post agendas for every one of these boards. And then, um, you know, if the select board needs to take an action to do it. You know, we'll still make sure they get a a notice. In addition to having the agenda, so we're, we're, like, you know, we meet open meetings.
Yeah.
Do we have a list of uh, planning board? Super fans, uh, Aron and uh, Kevin O'Neil and anybody else? Um.
Uh, Orin dropped off, you didn't, you didn't even hear that, Tim.
I I, yeah, I would, um. You know, maybe a Joe Fernandez, um. You know, um, I I think even, you know, Bob Kimball.
Bob's on transportation, so that's why I said transportation.
Wait, what was that, Tim?
Study committee, whatever it is.
Yeah, he's on the uh, traffic safety committee.
I would go.
I'm aware.
Uh, Mark, before you go, sorry, I just found one more thing on page one fifty. After wireless communication facilities, we're out of order, we put. Solar energy stuck in there where I think it should be over on page one forty-eight.
Hang on, I gotta dial over there. What's the section number?
Uh, it's ten, it's the definition, sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's definitely better, it's definite, oh, sorry, definitions is eleven.
Yeah. So say, say the uh section number again.
Uh, on page one fifty, right after wireless communication facilities, it goes back to solar. We started, we started solar on page one forty-eight. So I think we just need to consolidate that section there over onto um. Back a couple of pages as well, just to put it in order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ma- Mark, I got one too.
Yeah.
Uh, I know this is funny. Um, for mobile home park. You have it listed as two or more trailers under mass lots, just three or more trailers.
That's in the, yeah, that's in the definitions, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's it.
You change that right now? Great.
I I I got one more thing, I guess, for for the whole group to to ponder for a moment. Doesn't have to be answered in this meeting. But um for our uses table, would anybody be interested in pursuing the idea of removing? Multi-family from the R forty district?
Then it wouldn't be anywhere.
As a special permit?
It would be in village commercial and then it would be part of our new proposal for a multi-family specific district.
So what what's your, what's your rationale for that, Steve?
Well, part of it, we're trying to propose a multi-family district by right and we're being fought on the idea of adding in. Potential for new residents in town. Where currently we have three thousand three hundred acres in the R forty, that is potential multi-family.
Yeah, through the special permit, right?
Yeah, um, there's four hundred and fifty acres of village commercial that is multi-family by special permit also right now. Um, and we could use the new district we proposed as a way to expand. Where we want multi-family specifically as opposed to just throughout the entire R forty zone. And the R forty zone itself, all, one of the things we've heard at the town meeting was multi-families are gonna bring all the students to just the Somnies school. And the R forty zone exclusively feeds the Somnies.
Mm-hmm, right.
So.
Do you think that gives us leverage with the um? MBTA zoning or?
I I think the trade-off for negative three hundred and two, uh, three thousand two hundred acres of land is is quite some. Bargaining chip. Yeah.
So I think people will take them and I.
I mean, I.
I don't know if it makes sense for the recodification.
Well, that is, the recodification itself is exactly where we're working on the new draft of the uses table. It's, it's, it is the time. To do it, I think. I mean, I I I think the idea is that, with with the MBTA district, one of the battles of it is that it's this district nobody wants. And doesn't look at as like a tool where, yeah, we're gonna only do fifty acres right now. But we wanna view it as something that if we remove multi-family from all around town and only limit it to using. This tool as where we wanna place it. Then we have much greater control of where our multi-family goes and it will be a reduced amount, even if we choose more places to put. Our multi-family specific district. And we can design that district to be something that caters to multi-family lifestyle. Which means like the retail uses, the top of the shop. Like, we want to add commercial to multi-family to make it viable for tax revenue. And right now in the mo- in the R forty, where there is multi-family, there is no commercial base there to offset that.
I have to think about that, Steve. It's intriguing.
Yeah, I I I'm kinda leaning to him in this, uh, a bit beyond the scope of a recodification project.
Uh, you, as I, I think if it comes up at the same meeting as the MBTA, what people are gonna hear is the removal of three thousand acres of. Multi-family versus the addition of fifty. I.
I I agree.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, they could do both. Well, three thousand acres and not.
And say no, yeah, right.
No, no, Steve, I don't, I I think, I I don't, I'm not trying to be dismissive. I I I'd sure like to think a bit more about that.
That's why I prefaced it with the time to think about it thing, but.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
I think it's a proactive way to think about how we're gonna do multi-family going forward. And it doesn't allow us to place it more where we want it to be as opposed to where we don't want it to be.
Right, but people are gonna look at it as, well, I live in our sixty or I live in our eighty and now you're gonna put multi-family in my zone where I didn't have to worry about that before.
Well, that's the potential of the MBTA district, not the removal of and the multi-family from our forty.
Right, but you're removing it from our forty so that. We can create where we want it and it doesn't have to go in one forty, which means it can go anywhere.
But that's already.
Sixty or our eighty. It can't go in our sixteen or eighty.
It can, if we, if what we just proposed passed, that overlay could go on our eighty or our.
Yes, the three A, yes, absolutely could, but it's fifty acres. It's, you know, nothing, whereas if we open up all of our sixty and our eighty. To potentially getting multi-family, I think we're gonna hear about it.
But we already did. By getting that overlay district, we could propose it again in another, like the. What we proposed already opened up the entirety of town to multi-family, not just.
Right, but three A was just fifty acres. It's gonna go in one spot, well, not necessarily one spot, it's gonna be fifty acres. And that's where it's going to go.
But this petition was, not the potential of the overlay, we asked, the overlay does not say that it's limited to fifty acres. We could have.
Well, it's a minimum of.
Yeah.
But but any landowner in town could come and petition the town meeting to change their zoning, to include that. That's what we just offered to the town, that any parcel, group of parcels in town could uh write an article to town meeting. And propose multi-family by right. We just, that's what we just proposed.
Yeah.
Uh, I get it, but you're going to have a significant. Yeah.
And that's what we're gonna propose again for the next time, when we propose this multi-family by right as an overlay.
Right, but we are telling them where the initial parcel or parcels is going to go. If somebody wants to add on personally to that overlay of their own parcel, that's up to them and that's their fight at town meeting. Not planning board.
I agree a hundred percent, but that's regardless, if we put this zoning district on the books. We are now granting the privilege for any residents or group of residents to now petition the the article.
Yeah, and then they have to get it back at town meeting.
So whether or not we we do that now or with another article, that doesn't change. Whether or not we should remove special permit multi-family currently from the R forty. The effect of the MBTA is still a separate trajectory.
Okay, but if we remove it now. Have we opened ourselves up to litigation by not having a zone, a residential zone that allows multi-family? We gotta put it somewhere.
It's in the village commercial. We already have four hundred fifty acres of village commercials on for it and we had, we're gonna propose an MBTA or a multi-family district.
Yeah, I I.
This is getting the third rail territory again.
Yeah, it's, uh, my, my concern too is, and I think recodification, it's largely. Largely, it's a reorganization and fixes like Mark's been doing to get us compliant with. It and, you know, ge- getting compliant with mass general law. This is a big cut at a pretty significant change. Um. That's where I would just be hesitant in this, you know, in this instance. I mean, I I'm, I'm still hesitant because. I would like to down the road make some changes to. Yeah, open up multi-family to, you know, Steve, we've talked about this, but, you know, to see how we could. Promote more gentle density with, you know, things like triplexes and quads being treated differently. Than.
Right.
A three hundred unit apartment complex, which our code does not do.
Right, which that's the R forty right now.
Yeah, I mean, R forty could be, any of these zoning districts could accommodate a triplex. You know, and it would be, it would be much more compatible with what's there versus a hundred unit apartment complex, so. I don't know, I I.
That's where the the multi-family that we're designing would handle that ability to regulate that code, where the R forty as a district right now. Does not prescribe that, that sort of code around a multi-family building.
You're right, it doesn't, yep.
So that's sort of the art, like, in a way, you kind of argued my point, to be fair, right?
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm I'm not trying to dismiss it, it's just, I think my bigger issue is a procedural is that this now goes. Beyond what I would say is a recodification and I I. You know, I certainly wanna make sure that we we get the recodification passed through. Um, you know, adding this dimension to it is, to me, is a substantively different thing.
Um, I mean, we went through the uses table and we decided on changing some of the yeses and special permits and no's. We did that.
We did.
The same thing as that.
I I disagree wholeheartedly. I I, you you're opening a whole new can of worms. I, you know, I think the uses table, it was brought up to. More current standard. It made corrections where necessary. But it didn't change anything really that materially.
I mean, that's fair, I I, yeah, I mean, it's fair that you you might disagree with the thought, but, I mean, I think, I think it's. In my mind, it's a better way to go forward with how we do multi-family around town. It's something to think about. While we're in the middle of this project right now.
Yeah, I think it's timely for how we're familiar with it, but I think I'm leaning towards Paul's. It feels like it's more of a substance change, it's.
I think we've lost them again.
Yeah.
Really? You didn't hear me that time?
Yeah, we hear you now.
That was perfectly clear, yeah.
I didn't move. I think that we've, I'm kind of in agreement with Paul. Whether it's a good idea or not. It's a more sub- substantive change than we've done with some of the other. Okay, so it's definitely something that we can look at. Sure, but I'm not sure in this, in this moment, in this vehicle.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna get you the revamped third edition of this on or before Friday of next week. So that'll give you a couple of weeks, ten days, thirteen days to be, well, yeah, thirteen days plus or minus.
Yeah, we'll have this, we have this in time to be able to post it and give it to people prior to. Prior to the thirteenth.
Yeah, my objective is to give it to you at the end of next week, that's, and that's. What is the date? Um, what is Halloween is the Thursday?
Yeah, so it'll be the.
Yeah, the first, so you'll get it no later than the first. What time's town hall close on the Friday?
Twelve thirty.
Alright, you'll have it at twelve twenty-five.
Okay, and I will hopefully be able to start putting word out tomorrow. Plus, we also have to remove things from the old town hall. Tomorrow's the deadline to get anything else out of there. Before. It's not, the building's not coming down right away. There's a bunch of things that have to be dealt with. They're discovering.
Electricals are all the fire hazards.
Uh, well, that's one of them, Tim. That's one of them, uh, can't do anything until after the election because. The Secretary of State's cable wire goes to the old town hall and they didn't connect this building just yet, so. Town clerk is still running back and forth between the two buildings, so. You know, you know, who knew taking down a building would be so complicated?
I'm upset that the bank took the safe out.
Yeah.
They should have used that as an architectural element in new building.
You know, we could have used it. You should see, we have a few vaults in this building now that are. Pretty extensive.
Nice.
But anyway, folks, um, I will do my part and get everything, get this event. Uh, scheduled, get it out there and um, and then I'll do what I can. I I. You know, there are some people I've now connected with because of the MBTA that I wanna just remain in touch with because. You know, they they seem like people have good ideas and, you know, get them to the table, so I'll see if they're remotely interested in this, so. I shouldn't say remotely, but see if they're interested, but I definitely want them being in- interested as we go forward with MBTA, so.
Sounds good.
Oh, yeah.
If there's anything else, do we wanna adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, anything else, Paul, there, I cut you off.
Thanks, everybody.
No, we're good to go. I wanna get on home.
On favor?
I.
Bye.
Alright, everyone, have a great weekend.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.